Also shaking your order. Bill, sir, and Charlie.
Burgess.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Oskar.
Here.
Washington.
Ian.
Williams.
Here.
All right. We're going to the slide number two. This is the new reaction hearing, this is a hearing for Lieutenant James Allison. Is Lieutenant James Allison present?
Present.
All right. Perfect. It's by, I wish to sit up there with you guys, but this is by way of procedure, I guess, because we've done this, at least not with this full board. This is a hearing based upon the charges that were brought by Chief Stafford. The department is requesting that Lieutenant Allison be terminated from his job as a paid on call firefighter with your department. It's based upon a number of incidents. One of those incidents came to light. Lieutenant Allison was formally interrogated by myself. Chief Stafford was present. It's a procedure that has to be done by state statute. He's essentially interviewed his court reporter in this one statement. Get some background information. After taking that statement and talking with other fellow firefighters, the charges were brought against Lieutenant Allison. So tonight you're to hear testimony from various witnesses, including Lieutenant Allison. And then at the end of that, they ask you to go into executive session. Make motion for executive session to deliver an affidavit. Judge and jury, see if the charges have been proven. If not proven, takes it over. If they have proven, then you should decide what's your appropriate discipline. Should be for Lieutenant Allison. And the charges that were brought are seeking dismissal to your department. And I ask that you can hold your fine during the whole proceeding, just like a regular court hearing or trial, and then make a decision moving at that time. All the witnesses tonight will be sworn in for a court. And all the questions are on your phones. And it's your duty to look at how they testified. Do we believe this testimony is truthfully, accurately, we believe more than other people or all people? And allegations, their disciplines. It's up to you guys. Okay? Any questions before we start?
When we go back into executive session, is it like a jury that we have to come back? We have us?
No, I'll slide it over. All right. The Burgess of the Village. Again, Lieutenant Allison is a paid on call firefighter at the Appell. Now, Patrick, a firefighter that has a union eye that represents any of the members, like the police department, United States, and my Appell, which means he could be terminated for any reason. I just don't have time to do a hearing. Okay? Any questions based on that? Today, I may ask that Lieutenant Allison take a seat here with his own stand. Is it from those right side? Can you, is it right now? As we go through, I've got a number of exhibits that I own. I give Lieutenant Allison a copy. He's like a school teacher right now. And he asks me not to leave through until we go through the exhibits, okay? How many, there's some papers we're playing, but refrain from going through it. Just where you turn it over in front of us and say you have the number two pencil?
Yeah.
I'll give you a copy, and it'll be an official one given to the court reporter. Okay? All right, sir, can you please state your name? It's not your last name.
My name is James Allison. J A, I mean, yes, well, I'm just Allison, A, L, S, N, P, A, S.
And Mr. Allison, even though I would ask some questions, if you could just go ahead and speak right to the mayor and the board, okay? Sir, did you receive a copy of?
Yes, I saw it in my question.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Can you please sort it?
Did you raise your hand? Do you sound square in testimony you're about to give in this class, truth or two, and have you got two sentences?
I do.
So you're stating your name. Exhibit, yeah, it's in front of you to your left. If you could take a look at tab one. Can I have a look at tab one? You recognize that, sir? Exhibit one is taking a copy of the charges for dismissal that was served depending on Chief Stafford.
I do.
Do you understand that this is the reason why we're here tonight for a hearing based upon those charges?
I do.
Essentially, the charges state on the second page that you violated various provisions of the standard operating guidelines of the Stock Village Fire Department, correct? That's what the charges state.
Okay, that's what the charges state.
And you're aware that you're here for a hearing with the department seeking your termination based upon violations of various provisions of the SOG, or the Standard Operating Guidelines.
I am aware of SOG.
Prior to July 4th of last year, 2014, have you ever been disciplined by the Stock Village Fire Department?
Going how far back?
Good. Anytime prior to July 4th of 2014?
Yes.
Can you receive any discipline? And if you had, can you give me what discipline and for what reasons? They say time periods.
Uh, I have received several, not several, I probably, I remember being talked to twice when I was involved in an accident with a little vehicle in 2005. Fire chief at the time was Chris School. It was said it was handled with verbal warning from the fire chief at that time. It seemed right, and the vehicle would have been that morning. The other write-up that I've received I was talking to was the chief, Ed Myers. And I had to do a write-up that he had received from the captain of the unit. So, Captain David, who were the council, he was co-feministic group, that at length, for a consequence by assistant chief Myers, who told him that the kind of, that person that no more to it.
What was the timeframe of that incident?
Time period for the last item discussed, the lead was maybe a month prior to four of July.
To the summer of 2014?
February, right, spring, summer.
And a month prior to the incident we're here to discuss?
I can't use that as a timeframe, but it was summer of 2014.
That incident, the verbal from assistant chief Myers, can you give us some detail? Elaborate on that incident and why you're disciplined.
The accusation was that we called the captain's David for talking to another officer of the department, claiming to come across for his desk from Captain Sidaway at that point. Assistant chief Myers pulled us in together, asked us what had happened. We gave our own story that it wasn't necessarily as illustrated by Captain Sidaway. And again, we were told it was a, it was a dumb issue. It was dealt with by the assistant fire chief at that time. I was under the impression that it wouldn't have served us again.
Well, what were the exact allegations?
I don't remember. I cannot recall because I, I reviewed my own personal file. I cannot find a write-up of this in my own personal file within fire chief's office.
Did you recall meeting with the assistant chief and the other firefighter pertaining to the alleged allegations?
I do remember meeting.
And you remember anything from that conversation?
Not particularly, except that watch what we say and be kind to everybody else and report the assistant chief at that time. Everybody's got a fun nice to go.
And do you recall if this incident occurred at the station?
I'm not sure where the alleged allegation took place. That was, that's my recollection, we never discussed.
Do you have any other recollection as far as that conversation?
I'm sure I did not.
So you have no recollection that the allegation pertained to the firefighter's golf outing? And you having words with the captain?
The golf outing took place in 2013, sir.
Okay. Is that not part of that allegation? Is that your testimony?
That's incorrect. That's not part of it.
So, no golf outing, or no?
The golf outing, there was an incident. There's no golf place. And it was also dealt with in house.
So how?
Which review, I had to be chief for Jackwood at the time. Everybody wrote this incident up. I took that copies of those write-ups as well, all the word in my personal file.
Which golf outing, what year are you talking to?
2013, sir.
Okay, so there was an incident in 2013 of the golf outing?
Correct.
And that was, what was alleged took place in that golf outing?
What was alleged was there were some words between himself and an engineer at the time, and also Captain Sidaway.
All right. What was the engineer's name?
Engineer Barrett.
Did you receive any discipline based upon that incident?
I did not. Again, verbal, I was talking to by the deputy chief for Jackwood, in which I believe his recommendations at all parties involved, being a non-duty event, everybody was under the influence or had a drink that day. They've got a little lot of game in them, so if I had that in chief at that time.
But you consider that to be discipline, correct? The verbal reprimand?
And regret that discipline says to the fire department, boy, does I do.
But you agree, sir, that it was a verbal reprimand?
I do.
For discipline, correct?
I do.
And you testified that no one was intoxicated? Does that include your side?
They intoxicated, they did. They did the drink. And I'm not going to judge to say whether they were intoxicated or not. Personally bred alcohol, that's any luck, so I don't know their personal evidence to say they were intoxicated. My understanding in the words "taxicated" means that we were drunk.
Okay. And let's talk about you at that golf outing. Were you legally drunk?
Just my knowledge.
And where'd you base that on?
I was able to still conduct myself. I was able to talk and speak. I was a part of the people that were also interacting with me. I had received no warnings from anybody else that I was with that day that I had been maybe driving too much.
Have you had a previous employment with other fire departments or fire protection districts?
Fire protection, yes.
And was that the Bayless Fire Protection District?
The North Bayless Fire Protection.
And what was your reason for leaving that department?
It was medical reasons.
And did those medical reasons prohibit your, your employment here in Stock Village?
No, it does not.
Did you get clearance from your medical provider?
I did at a particular time.
And was that provided to in Stock Village Fire Department?
It was not a provider to the Stock Village Fire Department. I handed in medical clearance from my card. I was with clear me for full duty, just to embellish a little bit on what he's trying to ask. I was a full-time firefighter under contract. I had so much time that I afforded in a bank. I went off with a hypopressure issue. They kept, the company doctor for the district, wasn't that I was cleared to go, they didn't want to certify me, but they were afraid of the risk. So we got into kind of a three-way argument between my doctor, the company doctor, and the specialists that they had. They sent me for fitness evaluation, which I passed, and still the ultimate from the company doctors, he just didn't want to take that risk. I was good to go. My pressure was bad, under control, but still, you know, it's firefighting, you know, we exposed ourselves. Temperature sausage tonight versus temperatures up to 100 degrees above here. So I have a medical doctor, but the interns, they didn't want to take that risk.
Have you ever reported to the Stock Village Fire Department while intoxicated?
No.
Have you ever reported to the Stock Village Fire Department after consuming alcohol?
If you're, I did, I had been drinking alcohol on the charge of.
Other than, other than July 4th of 2014, have you ever reported to the Stock Village Fire Department after consuming alcohol?
Not for a call, not on duty, no.
At any time, have you ever reported or been present at the Stock Village Fire Department with any weapon?
I did.
Have you ever been to Stock Village Fire Department with a magazine clip for a weapon?
Yes, I did.
And what was that?
I don't remember the exact time. It was August 4th, April 1st.
Okay. Was it last year?
So was 2014, correct.
And you do acknowledge that you brought a magazine?
Correct.
With ammunition in that magazine on the premises at the Stock Village Fire Department, correct?
Correct.
And you are, you are a paid on call firefighter, correct? That meaning you're not scheduled to work at the fire department, correct?
We were having alcohol status, we don't carry a dangerous, the bureau will wear, radio tones get transmitted to alert school call. Get our personal vehicles dragged out to the fire station. Give the fire department or village owner fire apparatus at their spot from the station to where they're calling.
Right, so you're not scheduled next week, I go work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you don't have any set hours or days employed with the Stock Village Fire Department as a paid on call firefighter, correct?
I also work as a part-time engineer for the department. And yes, I did, based on days that I would choose to pick from the schedule to work, I would work Saturdays, based on what I'm doing.
And when were you working as an engineer for the department?
Well, last time I worked, I've been, I've been suspended from the department since four to five.
But in 2014, were you working as an engineer for the department?
I was.
And did you have any type of a regular schedule as an engineer? And if you worked once a week, twice a week?
It varied, but I would say probably on average, maybe two, three times a week.
As an engineer?
Correct.
Would that be scheduled through the chief or assistant chief?
I'm not sure who did this, who doesn't schedule, not believe it was.
No, Captain?
Captain Sidaway who was doing scheduling at that point.
An engineer, correct? So prior to July 4th of 2014, if you're a paid on call firefighter, the only reason to go to the firehouse, in your capacity as a firefighter, if you're toned out or if you receive a call, a emergency call, correct?
Correct. We also had at the time, had one fire, paid on call firefighter to live directly across the street from the fire station.
What's that got to do with anything?
Well, you're asking if I reported to the fire department in any manner other than fire calls and capacity to be a firefighter.
But if somebody lives across the street, that has nothing to do with?
She's also on the fire department. It would be gathering at her house.
So what? What's that got to do with anything?
Sir, again, you're asking if I reported to the fire department in any manner other than duty position.
The question is, the only reason, the only reason you should actually report officially to the fire department is if you're toned out, correct?
Sir, we've got guys in another fire station all the time to hang out on every fire team down there, to watch you down there. They've got together to play card games down there. To answer your question simply, though, there's other reasons besides being on duty.
You can go there and show up socially.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Are there any rules? Are there any rules, or have there been any structure or advice given by the, the deputy chief about going to the firehouse after you consumed alcohol?
Usually the rules are without at the firehouse.
You say usually, is that always a rule, or is there?
It used to be a rule, and that's going back, back from when I started.
So you used to be able to go there after you've been drinking?
Fire chief at the time says, if you had dints in your car, come on up. And it was the deputy chief that actually put this one down.
When did the zero tolerance provisions start?
Going back to 2013, 2014, maybe.
Okay, so as early as 2013?
Correct.
And how was, how were you made aware of the zero tolerance?
For a moment, I was surprised.
Okay, and that wasn't just given to you? That was given to everybody at the department, correct?
To the boss, my alibi.
All right, so everyone was given information? There wasn't question? The policy of the department was, if you show up at the department, you better not have been drinking before you get, correct?
To answer the call, correct.
How about if there wasn't a call? Are you allowed to show up at the firehouse if you've been out socially drinking and just hanging out at the firehouse?
To be honest with you, I've never asked that question, and I know the members have asked.
Okay, since the zero, since the zero tolerance?
I can't answer that.
Okay. Have you, how about you, since the zero tolerance, have you shown up to the firehouse after consuming alcohol?
The night I had, I think, I guess, started to use water.
What about the coworker that lives right across the street? Is there a working bathroom in that house?
There is.
On July 4th of 2014, you reported to a fire call, and that was being covered by four members of the fire department, correct?
Correct.
On July 10th, 2014, you received formal notice interrogation. And right, that's part of the package as exhibit three, correct? Right, good. It's exhibit seven. Correct.
Most interrogation, that's correct.
That's high signature allowed, have the notice. An affidavit of service that you're served on that date, correct?
It's so served by the fire chief in his office.
You should go to tab nine, the transcript from that formal interrogation. You recall being informed, interrogated under oath with the court reporter present in front of the public on July 31st, 2014.
I do.
Pardon me?
I do.
Do you take a look at tab two? You recognize that as the standard operating guidelines of the fire department?
One of them, yes.
Is this the current standard operating guidelines as of July of 2014? Would you be concerned that the only time you should be on the scene of a fire call is if you've been toned out, you respond to the firehouse, and you go out with a crew to the scene of a call?
That is, fire chief can expand on that a little bit.
But if your testimony is that not the procedure that's been implemented to be followed by the chief in your department, that if there's a tone out, that firefighters are, respond to the firehouse?
Correct.
Report, get on the apparatus, and go to the fire call.
Correct.
So there's no reason to go directly to a fire call, correct?
As an officer, I, we've got, other officers have exercised judgment in passing. It's not, that seems to ensure that the crew's safety is okay if they don't call an officer in on that call.
Have you done that?
I have in the past, yes.
And why would you do that? Take it upon yourself to respond directly to a call if a call's been toned out and is properly being followed and covered by members of your fire department?
The address of the call was.
I'm not talking about July 4th incident, I'm sorry. Like you said, other.
The, the address of the call was house firing area, it was early morning, so I, the members, we don't staff very well in the morning, people, and work into that nature. Came into school showing, it was around the corner from my residence, and I took it upon myself to stop in an effort to see if we needed life safety, if I needed to escalate a response to a box alarm or a full-still alarm beside the normal companies that are incoming on a normal assignment. As it was, the house turned out to be vacant. There wasn't anyone in the house. Captain Sidaway showed up, he assumed command. Fire chief was also on scene, I advised him what I did, and there were still bill comings from that. So to answer his question, there, there's a little bit of judgment that can be exercised that the chief has afforded us. Since then, as a lieutenant, what they qualify as a line officer, since that incident, I have been advised to report to the fire station.
The standard operating guidelines, you and the fellow firefighters, everyone has a copy of that, correct?
It's in the post in the radio room.
Right, everyone is presumed to have read it and follow those rules, correct?
It's presumed.
All right, have you read that, the guidelines at some point here in your career as a firefighter with the department?
It's once upon a time.
All right. If there's changes to the guidelines, you're, you're giving copies of those changes or amendments to the guidelines?
I'm not sure how, I remember that, how they post changes. They used to be allowed them to be posted somewhere near the radio room, which is a central gathering point for most of us, and it would denote what had changed or what portion had changed.
Do you have any problems with any of the terms and conditions of the guidelines? All right. And you're aware that the guidelines say that not to report to a fire call after consuming alcohol?
Yes.
And there's no exceptions contained in the guidelines, correct?
Yes, it's written, correct.
Any idea why the guidelines would be written that way? What is the, the purpose?
It is for safety.
I'm sorry?
It is a matter of safety for the public, for myself, for the other members of the department.
And liability purposes, correct?
Yeah, the liability, correct.
Somebody's been drinking, who knows what could happen? They could trip over a fire hose, all sorts of things can happen if they've been drinking or at work, correct?
Correct.
And that's the reason why it's there?
Correct.
Take it to July 4th of about last year. Obviously, it was a forced July holiday. You're not scheduled to work as an engineer, correct?
Correct.
And so you're not scheduled to work in any capacity with the Stock Village Fire Department on that date, correct?
You say scheduled like I was supposed to be there being that call, we're always ready to go. So was I scheduled to do a part-time engineership, no, it was not.
Let's just go through it, so there's no reason exception. There's approximately 27 members of the fire department, correct?
Correct.
Out of that, there's approximately 23 paid on call firefighters?
Correct.
All right, if there's a fire call, nobody really knows who's going to respond, correct?
That's correct.
It should be all, it could be all 23, or it could be none, correct?
Correct.
All right. And what is the, what happens if 10 paid on call firefighters respond to a, for instance, a CO call? Would it be the first four that arrive, get on the apparatus, and leave? The other ones are excused?
No, everybody stays at the station until they're dismissed by an officer.
But not everybody goes on the call, correct?
Correct.
How many go on the call?
That depends on the severity of the call.
Let's just say it's a CO call.
Do I have a CO call right after, elementally? I need that for personnel?
Well, you don't really, you get there, right?
Correct. And again, that's why I said it depends on the severity of the call, and also the nature of the call. To say that a simple four man engine's going to roll out, doesn't quite cover it. It depends on what the first day crew finds. Just when the house fire, people, crew four out of the house fire, gets burned, they're going to request more help. Same thing with the CO call, where somebody trapped underneath the car, same, same difference. If officers call while they're there to request more help or to send people back.
Right, the call for more, you have to, no, paid on call firefighters showed up, have the written agreements established with surrounding fire departments and fire protection districts to back up the Stock Village Fire Department?
I believe there are.
But you know them, right? You've seen those agreements, have you not?
I have not seen the written agreements between the department, says the fire chief and these people in front of them that, that they're relevant, not at that moment.
All right.
I know there are agreements in place, whether verbal or written, there are agreements in place.
Let's go to July 4th, it's a forced July holiday. You consumed alcohol that day, correct?
Correct.
Consumed alcohol in a number of places that day, correct?
Correct.
All right, you started out, you're in some friend groups, have you met up with some friends?
I had lunch at a local bar in Linnwood.
All right, you have this pickups in Linnwood?
Correct.
What time did you arrive in pickups, about?
Going back to July, going back anywhere, it was lunchtime.
Okay, so you arrived there at lunchtime?
Correct.
Lunchtime to you means what time?
Noon, one o'clock.
Okay, so you arrived there at noon, one o'clock? You start drinking when you got there?
I ordered lunch and had a couple beers, yes.
All right, how long did you stay at pickups in Linnwood?
I'm going to finish my lunch.
Do you recall how long you were there?
I do have a couple.
Do you recall at your formal interrogation stating that you stayed at pickups for two to three hours?
Correct. That was, that has to be, you eat lunch and a couple beers.
Tonight, you don't remember how long you stayed there. When it took your interrogation last July, you said two to three hours. What is more accurate?
Two to three hours, you eat lunch, have a couple beers, yes.
That's based on your testimony last July, correct? All right, so you're at pickups for two to three hours, and with your interrogation, you couldn't tell me how many beers you had consumed there?
Correct.
Remember, it hasn't gotten better since July, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so we don't know how many beers you had at pickups for two to three hours. What were you drinking the whole time?
No.
When did you stop drinking at pickups?
Probably about half hour, four minutes before it was my duty.
All right, then where did you go?
I went to, we was Y's, I think, Village.
Okay, so you stayed at pickups, you went there for two to three hours, and started at lunchtime. I'll do you the benefit that at one o'clock in the afternoon? That was four o'clock, correct?
Correct.
All right, uh, you went to Wise Guys, how long you stayed at Wise Guys?
Not very long, I, I don't even think you recall how long, I mean, it was a beer and shot.
A beer and a shot, okay, how long it take you to consume a beer and a shot at Wise Guys on the Fourth of July last year?
I can't recall how long, I think it was a girl or a few hours, five or six.
More than an hour? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Give me your best estimate, how long you were at Wise Guys, consuming a beer and a shot?
About...
Okay, so two or three hours at pickups brings you four o'clock near Wise Guys, uh, for one hour, two hour and five o'clock. Where'd you go actually, left Wise Guys?
Uh, I went to, was heading towards a front office across from the fire station.
Okay, and then what happened?
Uh, saw the engine down the street, made the decision to stop and see if everybody was sitting, again, being a holiday weekend, knew that the fire chief was out, I wasn't sure about the assistant chief. I knew that the one captain, Captain Staley was at home, uh, celebrating, and I wasn't sure about Captain Sillman, but I had to meet Tom Myers that night, Mary had a death warrant. I made the decision at that point to stop.
Well, in this, this, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I need to interrupt you, so this happened according to your testimony so far, your timeline, that you're telling the board, it's about five o'clock?
It was, it was evening.
Okay, but when you spent two to three hours at pickups, one hour at Wise Guys, so you were about five o'clock?
Okay, I was, well, I was at pickups, pickups, I was watching the time, it was a holiday.
You don't have any memory of it tonight, you said your memory is better back in July, and when you testified under oath in front of the chief, you said it was two to three hours of pickups.
Okay, if that's the answer, then that's, that's a little less of your crime.
Okay, and then you just testified under oath, you said one hour at Wise Guys, so around five o'clock you stayed there, about an hour for the beer and a shot because there were people in there busy to talk to people, so, five, six, seven, correct?
Whatever the testimony had to be back in, back in July, last year, exactly, I can't recall anything that happened.
And Wise Guys, when I asked you back, so why you didn't know how long you were there?
Okay, I guess.
Tonight you saying more how long?
Possibly a beer and a shot, yes.
Okay, back when I test, when you testified, when I asked you how many drinks you had at Wise Guys, you said one drink. Is a beer and a shot to be one drink or two drinks?
Uh, it's two.
Okay, so your testimony back in July is, is not accurate?
I usually, when I had a beer and a shot, I considered that a, a run.
Okay, uh, you do that, it's a round, uh, your dollars are round at, uh, let's say five-thirty, and then your testimony is that you went by the firehouse because you wanted to see who was holding on the house across the street?
Correct. Correct.
And then at the time, uh, you saw this call, you saw the apparatus out in the Y C, what had to say to your testimony?
Yes.
And so far through your testimony, are you accurate with the timeline and approximate time of where you've been?
Uh, once in place, yes, it's the best I have.
And under oath also, correct?
Correct.
All right. Do you recall, uh... Strike that, are, are you aware, sir, that the, the call, uh, which is time stamped through the department that, uh, you saw taking place actually occurred at approximately nine p.m.?
Okay.
What happens between five-thirty and nine p.m. or what were you doing?
Again, it was my time, it had to take me a lot of time, I don't recall the time you were there.
Okay, so you have no recollection of the time or what you were doing, correct?
I don't have any recollection.
All right, but you acknowledge that you're out since around noon that day?
Correct.
And you gave a party call, uh, nine hours later, and you'd been drinking during the day, correct? And, and that's correct, right?
That's correct.
And, and when I took your former interrogation, uh, you repeatedly answered by, you could not recall or you could not remember as far as how many drinks, uh, and what you had been doing, correct?
That is correct.
Is there any doubt in your mind that you were drinking between, uh, approximately noon that day until just before, right, you saw the apparatus out in the street?
I was not drinking just before, I didn't drink for that.
Okay, if you weren't drinking just before, because that's where I'm lost with your testimony.
Okay.
If the call, we know the call is at eight fifty-five P.M.
Correct.
And you just testified, you just went through your, uh, your timeline, you left Wise Guys at five-thirty or six?
Correct.
From five-thirty or six to eight fifty-five P.M., what were you doing?
If I ever recall back to the timeline that you interrogated back in July, it was where I was drinking, it was, I don't think there was any, no call had, had in front of me, no testimony as to where else I was.
Okay, where were you then?
I believe I sat at home as well.
Well, we can go through the transcript, and I think we're going to, because you never mentioned that you went home.
Okay.
All right, so are you changing your testimony tonight, under oath, in contradiction to your testimony that you gave back in July, that now you stopped at home?
No, I'm not.
Okay, who saw you at home, you stopped there?
My parents.
Okay, what, what time did you get home?
I don't recall the date.
What did you do when you got home?
Was at that.
Right? Couple minutes, then what did you do?
Caught him on the mound, catched his third.
If you acknowledge that you had made that statement at all back in July, then certainly your memory would have been more fresh of what had taken place on July fourth, than when you're having, had your charges in front of you, uh, eight months later.
Correct, and again, just to reiterate at my side, you had a decision in where, where I was drinking, I think, not what else I had. You were more interested in where I was drinking and how much I was drinking versus where I was the rest of the day.
You don't know what I'm interested in, I would ask you questions, taking you through where you're going, what you did, you never mentioned that you stopped home.
Correct.
Correct?
I don't think I was asking that question, I was asking the timeline of where I was, what I was drinking, and how long I was at each of that issue.
Okay, you remember the questions in the line, and you get the trustee's at half, because I never threw it, and you never mentioned going home.
Correct.
Correct?
If, if it's in, if it's in that side.
In any event, at approximately nine P.M., uh, you observed, uh, one of the fire trucks near two-twenty-one in black, correct?
That is correct.
And you stopped there?
Correct.
And by the way, what were you driving?
I think you swore, uh, what year it is, in two thousand two?
Correct. You told, or strike that, uh, do you recall the firefighters that were on the scene?
Yes, I do.
And who were there?
Firefighter, firefighter, engineer Sterns now, and firefighter, what car, Johnson, engineer Gary Bell.
Gary Bell, do you recall being told by firefighter, retired Johnson, uh, that you're not supposed to be there?
Correct.
And again, you know the rule that you're not supposed to report directly to a call, supposed to go to the station first?
In a letter to the law, yes, I understand.
All right. Do you recall the conversation you had with firefighter Johnson?
I do not.
Do you recall at your, uh, former interrogation, I asked you about that conversation, you stated you could not recall anything about the conversation because it was a month earlier?
Correct.
Do you recall calling firefighter Johnson the N-word at the scene?
No, I actually denied that statement.
And when I say the N-word, I'm not gonna disparage anyone here in this room.
I actually denied that statement.
On that night when you were spotted in or went to that call, were you under the influence of alcohol?
Yes, sir.
Did you holler at anybody at the scene, at my dad, any of the firefighters that were working on that call?
That must have served you well.
After being at the scene, uh, do you recall driving off?
I do.
And as you drove off, do you recall passing a vehicle driven by assistant chief, uh, Ed Myers?
I do not.
Do you recall almost striking the vehicle driven by assistant chief Ed Myers?
I denied that statement as well.
You deny it or you did not recall?
Oh, I denied that statement.
So, we'll let you rephrase that, did you, uh, almost strike Ed Myers?
I did not.
It's strange though, because at your interrogation, under oath, a month after, um, this incident, when I asked that question, you said you could not recall, but tonight when your charge is against you, you're denying it.
That's because...
Is your memory better, again, tonight, than it was one month from the incident?
I have no information regarding that statement.
Did you fall behind, uh, the fire truck when you were on the scene?
That's my recollection.
Is it possible you fell behind the fire truck? Yes.
It's possible for any, but you're a trip before, I don't replicate all of them.
Any prior alcohol-related incidents, um, which, uh, ended up with assistant chief Myers picking you up and transporting you back home?
I was involved in a vehicle accident.
All right, and you've been drinking, um, prior to that accident?
Yes.
All right, and within approximately twelve months, within a twelve-month period, um, prior to the July fourth incident?
I believe it was longer than that.
Was it, uh, where at the accident caused by you on three ninety-four, on your land I R O?
Um, just north of Robber Ridge.
Okay, for that three ninety-four?
It was not getting any.
And assistant chief Myers is called out and, uh, transported you home?
Was it one of those?
Any other incidents, uh, pertaining to alcohol, uh, versus chief Myers is called out and transported you home? Sir, just, you know, you'll have a chance to present your, uh, defense after.
Ready to...
Uh, yeah, please, I can see that. Hello, Mr. Stewart?
Do you sound this way or are the testimony about to begin this time for two, four, two, and eleven two? Thank you.
Sir, please state your name for record?
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, please keep your voice up a little bit so I don't get to hear you, um, are you employed?
Yes.
Where are you employed?
I am employed, uh, with, uh, Christ Hospital, uh, and also employed as a, uh, fire truck, South Village.
How long have you been a paid alcohol firefighter with South Village?
Um, just a few months over to do.
And what's your current rank?
Firefighter, right.
Are you a paid alcohol firefighter with any other department or a fire protection district?
No.
And what's your affiliation with Christ Hospital?
I am, uh, I'm working in the fire department, uh, and...
All right, you're familiar with Lieutenant, uh, Jim Allison?
Yes.
May I ask you, uh, back in the summer of twenty fourteen, uh, were you present when he showed up at the firehouse?
Yes.
And this incident did not relate to any technical fire call or any tone out of the fire call, correct?
Correct.
Uh, were you there based upon a prior tone out or fire call?
Yes.
And did Lieutenant Allison show up in, uh, in scrubs, uh, you know, medical, uh, clothing from his, uh, secondary equipment?
Yes.
All right, and where did you meet up with him and, uh, and what took place?
Um, he and, um, Lieutenant Paul Myers, who were, um, we were just, uh, we were sitting in front of Big Boy and, uh, today, and he sho, he showed up. I'm not sure exactly how, was that his comment, but, uh, uh, he asked me, have I ever, uh, seen him on the zombie ground? I'm not sure exactly what that was, I was like, oh, so he reached inside his coat and I heard, uh, like, a tablet, uh, and he pulled down the bag, something with the, uh, ignition inside, saying, bomb.
Did that happen, uh, within the firehouse itself?
It happened inside the bay, just, yeah, just a lot of fire.
And was this, uh, daylight or was it nighttime?
It was daylight.
And, and are you a gon, a gun owner yourself?
Yes.
And, uh, do you recognize that sound?
Yes.
And what do you recognize the sound to be, that the clicking that you heard when Lieutenant Allison put his hand inside his shirt?
It was the sound of a magazine, magazine, it started, whatever.
The magazine comes outside of, you know, whatever type of weapon it's placed in?
Yeah, it makes a sound.
And then did he show you the magazine?
He showed, yeah, I saw the magazine, he just showed me, he showed me the ammunition that was inside of that.
All right, did it appear that Lieutenant Allison had, uh, been consuming alcohol?
It appeared that he might have been.
And where do you base that up?
Uh, that he might have been drinking more than that, but I didn't certain that it's...
Did he smell alcohol in him or did he act any differently than, uh, he would be if he had not been consuming alcohol?
No, I didn't smell alcohol, um, he, not so much, uh, he's probably, kind of like, standing, he was kind of like, moving inside, inside a little bit.
I'm gonna show you from the group exhibit, uh, tab eight, but this is a form of a, uh, typed out statement, it's addressed to Mayor Hanks and all the trustees, and then it contains names and signatures. Do you recognize the names and signatures on that exhibit?
Yes.
And whose names and signatures appear on that exhibit?
Members of the South Village Fire Department.
All right, uh, is your name and signature appear on that document?
Yes.
And why did you sign that document?
I signed the document because of that, because it means I'm available to the fire department, uh, to bring, to bring the weapon inside the fire station. We're, we're supposed to be there to protect the town, and so, but, like, it's, it's, it's just, it just didn't resonate with me, you know, why you come to that. Uh, we, a lot of those arms are on, uh, on the department, so they have our, consider their, making them a part of, uh, the fire station, not really one. Uh, so, and, there's been times where I, I haven't heard, seen, I have overheard that some, when someone called, it was a problem, that they might have been, might have been drinking, that I haven't seen myself, that I have overheard.
But then, you acknowledge you signed this document, and the purpose of this document is to memorialize, uh, by members of your department, uh, and it has... This, this board denies Lieutenant Allison's request that you remain with the department. All right, you signed it because, uh, your behavior brought affairs into the department and you fear that future actions, uh, would be detrimental to the department, because that's all you have, thank you. All right, Mr. Stewart, Lieutenant Allison may ask you a follow-up.
What do I just say? Correct, Mr. Stewart, the day in question where I showed up in scrubs, I, was it, what kind of weather was it?
It was in, uh, rainy, maybe some.
So it was warm, was I wearing a jacket?
Yes, you were.
What was I wearing?
Uh, you were, uh, I'm not sure exactly what jacket, but I didn't wear exactly that jacket.
Okay, and you say that I was in scrubs, this was late at night, and when I showed up to the fire department?
Yes.
Okay, I remember showing you the magazine, but I did not have a weapon, I had just come from work, correct?
Well, yeah, that's right, you did something.
Okay, so it would stand to reason, because I'm not licensed to carry a state law, as of yet, I do possess an out-of-state permit, which is intermain to the question, but it would make sense of coming from work, I would have weapon, because that's not my point, correct?
You know, if Jeff calls for speculation.
Are you aware of what I do at my second job?
No, I actually don't know.
So in scrubs, you figure some kind of a medical profession?
Yes.
Being in scrubs, you could surmise, in your opinion, that I'm not a law enforcement officer?
Yes.
Okay, so carrying a weapon in scrubs, that wouldn't match, okay. You did not see the weapon, correct? And you claim to hear the sound?
Yes.
Okay, did I physically see the weapon, I'm wearing a sweater, it's very tight, and I'm in scrubs?
Well, you were in a windbreaker jacket.
Windbreaker jacket, okay, but you physically did not see a weapon? I have no further questions.
I'll take it. I have a call, prefer to disturb. Ask the E S word?
Can you sound this way of our protest testimony about to begin this time for two, four, two, and eleven two?
Sir, please state your full name for record? Sir, please state your full name for record.
I'm sorry, I was copying.
CRI, S D E, A R N S.
Okay, and Mr. Sterns, uh, are you gainfully employed?
Yes.
Where do you work at?
Uh, part of a division, the, uh, and, uh, part of a...
In the South Village Fire Department? Are you a firefighter?
Yes.
How long have you been a firefighter? Two managers?
Yes.
You know Lieutenant Allison?
Yes.
Uh, when he asked you, can you see him, uh, at the scene of the station or, or at the station, have you seen of any fire call? Would you believe that, and did he, uh, have consumed alcohol or was intoxicated? Approximately how many times, uh, within the full, uh, period prior to July of 2014?
Prior to July, I think it was three off the end.
Three off the end? If you can tell us, uh, approximately when those occurred or where you were when you made those observations?
Uh, we've asked the will for a shorter term. And then we discussed, there was a winter, two, maybe, uh, I want to say about the center, it was cold. And, uh, he stopped by, went over there. And he said, if you're being intoxicated, then, uh, you put it in the fire.
He stopped by at the, uh, the firehouse?
Yes.
So you, you were hanging out at the firehouse?
Yes.
All right, is that a tolerance for some of the guys to hang out at the firehouse?
Almost, I think.
Okay, and is our core group of guys that hang out at the firehouse?
And switches up or not, usually up or not.
Now, are you aware of the zero tolerance policy that's been imposed by, uh, the department, uh, that don't should be at the firehouse after consuming any type of alcohol?
Yes.
Or do you have any problem with that, uh, zero tolerance policy? And that zero tolerance policy known to the other firefighters?
Yes.
All right, this core group that you hang out with, for the hangout at the, uh, firehouse, uh, they consume alcohol prior to going, they hang out at the firehouse?
No.
All right, do they ever consume alcohol on the premises? All right, so the incident that you testified to Lieutenant Allison showing up late night at the firehouse, uh, his window was clogged, you can smell alcohol in his breath?
It was local, it's not a water, so, anyway, had that, so, got it, I'm crazy, so, and felt that, he didn't, but it back up, it pulled it up. And he stood there, it's all, and you can smell it, and it was staggered, it was, but then.
All right, um, and were there any other differences?
Just a second, I have to, but, but.
Okay, and, uh, he's a higher ranking firefighter than yourself, uh, probably not easy to testify against him, uh, but, uh, is it your testimony under oath? That you observed him under the influence of alcohol three or four times at the firehouse? All right, that would be different from your short tenure as a firefighter with the department. You know, firefighter Johnson, that's Ricardo Johnson, correct?
Yes.
You may aware of an incident, uh, fire call on July fourth of last year, uh, when Lieutenant Allison showed up, he had three, and, uh, he'd consumed alcohol?
Right.
And you talked to firefighter Johnson about that incident?
He, he decided, I'm going to discuss it, he wanted to discuss it, so I would have.
Were you, uh, part of the, uh, the crew that was called out?
I was the responding officer.
A second?
I was the responding officer.
Okay, so you were toned out and you responded to that call? All right, so you were on the scene, uh, and that CO called at, what was it, two twenty-one, fly bar?
Uh, two thirty-five.
All right, fly, okay, and, uh, you were, the three other firefighters, did you see Lieutenant Allison show up on the scene?
I did.
Did you see him show up in his, uh, private vehicle on two thousand two, four, four?
Four, four, yes.
All right, where did, uh, the vehicle come to arrest?
He stopped, no one could drive, like, he leaves the place for the south.
All right, do you find that unusual, uh, that he responded directly to the call?
I believe there was no law, I don't know the dates, uh, nobody's designed to be able to, uh, anymore to, uh, to show.
Prior to that date, it was a policy of the department, let's imagine, uh, if a call's toned out, you're not supposed to respond right to the call?
Right.
So was that unusual that Lieutenant Allison just showed up on the call?
Yes, uh, I didn't see him before.
All right, and you never seen any officer or, uh, prior to the official to show up straight to the call?
Or there was a change, um, or it was...
Okay, and the, uh, insurance or the change, that makes the conversation with the old group, uh, approximately eighteen months ago?
Uh, there was some.
All right. Did you see, uh, Lieutenant Allison get out of his vehicle?
Yes.
Did you see him stumble around?
I did, stumbled two or three times, I saw, I was on my horse, discussing, what did, what did he do?
All right, did you have any conversation or direct contact with Lieutenant Allison?
I didn't.
And you spoke to firefighter Johnson?
I didn't, I didn't, uh, or I'm, uh, a firefighter.
All right, the firefighter Johnson ever tell you that Lieutenant Al- Allison had called him the end or?
He answered.
All right, is that, uh, next day at the firehouse?
Yes.
All right, so who was present in that conversation?
Uh, those who were, so we could be able to get a back, most of them.
All right, and that, uh, statement too again, by the way, firefighter Johnson, did you see African American?
Yes.
And did indicate whether that statement affected him or bothered him?
He said it only does, but it bothers slightly.
Okay. Did you prepare a report, uh, and then submit it to Assistant Chief Myers following the July fourth incident?
Yes, sir.
I'll show you the, we have four group exhibit of the bill of major. This is the second from last year, all right? On the top, it has four slash July slash forty-fourth, and engine one, the signature, the bill of major right inside, uh, which is, uh, more signature than my own. So, there's no take up, you've seen the head of signature?
Yes.
And, um, this document contains summary of the events, uh, that took place on July fourth of last year. Did you prepare this statement at the firehouse, uh, the year that you did have July fourth of forty-fourth?
Right.
Is that in the direction of Assistant Chief, uh, Ed Myers?
Right.
And then it's submitted to Assistant Chief Ed Myers in Chief Staff. Is this summary truthful and accurate as far as, uh, the subject of what took place, that a law would be the extent that I took for it? All right, thank you, good luck.
Mr. Stern, did you say that I called Mr. Johnson, I did not hear it, but it was, uh, said it? Why isn't that reflected in your write-up, sir?
I did not, I was, I didn't.
Okay. Was there any talk at any time from firefighter Johnson between yourself and him? That this charges of me making that statement were untrue, did he ever recant that statement to you? It states here that you were roughly behind the house for about ten minutes. You looked around, you saw my SUV. Said I noticed stumbling slightly. You just told the attorney that I was falling all over myself, and I don't remember your exact words, but made it sound as if I stumbled. So was I stumbling slightly, as you wrote here?
It was, it was, it was slightly.
Okay. So your original write-up on the floor was that I stumbled slightly, but yet you just stated two or three times, I don't consider that slightly.
Catch, no question?
The question is, how many times do you recall me stumbling?
Two or three stumbling, uh, you were off.
Okay, so it wasn't slightly, as you wrote previously?
It's, and it's my, say that's, uh, our first question.
Two or three steps of stumbling slightly, if you're fresh?
Yes.
Uh, Captain? Come in.
Do you sound, please swear of your testimony about this cause is the two, the two, the, uh, truth?
Sir, could you please state your name for record?
Yes, sir, the, uh, yes, that's right, I'm, uh, I'm...
Sir, are you a captain with the South Village Fire Department?
Yes.
How long have you been affiliated with, with the Fire Department?
About a year.
All right, now, I've been captain. All right, are you familiar with the standard operating guidelines of the department? Is every member of the Fire Department obligated to, uh, to read those guidelines and to abide by those rules?
Yes.
All right, do you have any problem with any of those rules? And if you're from testimony, uh, you agree that there's zero tolerance policy with the Fire Department, uh, as far as it is, if it concerns alcohol or any intoxicants that, uh, nor should reports of the firehouse, uh, have adjusted any alcohol or any intoxicant count. And certainly shouldn't go to any call if they've consumed any alcohol or taken any intoxicant count, that's correct? And is that in the zero tolerance policy in effect for, uh, one of the last two years?
Yes, sir.
I'll show you exhibit eight. Recognize that, if you have a, uh, statement, uh, that was in the Fire Department, uh, signed up members of the department in Florida to make this report, trust me.
Yes, sir.
Pertains to Lieutenant Allison, and requesting that, uh, the mayor's board denied Lieutenant Allison's request to be reinstated with the Fire Department.
I see.
All right, and did you, uh, help prepare that document, circulated?
Yes.
Can you tell me when it was prepared, approximately, when it was circulated?
Actually, I, I, I was, uh, 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 I was, uh, I was, uh, I was, uh, I was, uh, uh...
And was that circulated after a training session at the firehouse?
Yes, we had spoken prior to this to the members of the department, uh, what concerned, uh, Lieutenant Allison, who had a lot of contact, is his, uh, legal position, and, and, since I'm pretty well versed, uh, and I fully agree, and everyone has signed it. So then that after training, uh, just the chief fighters, uh, uh, I can't say that's, uh, I was, uh, two, I believe, he goes to us, I had a phone call to the mayor, that I heard the statement, and they were impressed, they were willing to sign it. Excited, if you want to sign it, go ahead, everybody, just, uh, here, please, sir.
Did everyone in the training session, um, on through with sign that statement, please? All right, you included yourself?
Yes, sir.
And why did you sign that statement?
Because of the concern about, I say, uh, you, you, Lieutenant Allison, uh, his, his, his alcohol, uh, kind of, uh, calls, uh, on the, uh, uh, things, they want, uh, uh...
Do you have personal knowledge of Lieutenant Allison responding to or coming to the firehouse, he had to be consuming alcohol? Prior to July fourth of twenty fourteen, did you give a ballpark, uh, number of, how many episodes you personally, or around?
Two or three, I think.
All right, how long before, uh, July fourth of twenty fourteen, did those two and three incidents occur?
It was, it was, uh...
All right, and you were, uh, at the firehouse when you met her? All right, and specifically, can you tell me any of the seasons, or was Lieutenant Allison responding to a tone out of the call, or was it just showing up at the fire?
It was called, uh, and he smelled alcohol, uh, uh, that he called.
All right, do you believe that he was intoxicated at any of those occasions?
Um, I wouldn't say intoxicated, but it was, it was alcohol.
Was this after, uh, the zero tolerance policy of the Fire Department? That's all.
Mr. Stern, if you state that I was on the call, or in the firehouse while the call was taking place, under the influence of alcohol? As an officer of the Fire Department, why didn't you immediately suspend me from duty and send me to be tested, ask per also the SOG guidelines and the policies of the South Village Fire Department?
I reported this to, to fires, to...
But as a senior officer within the Fire Department, you have the ultimate safety responsibility for the other members of the Fire Department, correct? So again, why didn't you send me in that particular moment, suspend me immediately, or remove me from active duty, and send me to?
Because it's not my job, it's his responsibility.
But you just said you were very well aware of the zero tolerance policy, correct? It was put in place by the fire chief and the assistant chief. So you don't know why you didn't send me, you're not the head of the sending people? So you violated or potentially put jeopardy everybody else's safety because you thought I was under the influence, but yet you did nothing about it?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, uh...
Do you remember counseling me about that? You didn't speak to me about it either, so you didn't inquire what was going on, you never spoke with me about it. Nobody ever spoke with me about it, correct?
No, they, they...
They didn't. Nobody, nobody ever spoke with me regarding this incident, as far as showing up to the firehouse while intoxicated for a call, no?
I didn't say, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, uh...
I've already asked my questions, I'm concerned, nothing further. Oh, I didn't want to do it, I take it there. Previous, twelve months prior to four July, did you respond in fifty-one forty-two to a, I believe it was a carbon monoxide alarm? Early spring, it was kind of chilly, and fifty-one forty-two, after the engine had gone en route, I was the officer, and after Assistant Chief Myers had gone on the air, responding? Do you remember being asked by Sergeant Langen of the South Village Police Department if you had been drinking? Do you remember Assistant Chief Myers telling you to get your butt, excuse my language, yourself in the department vehicle back to the station as soon as possible? I can't remember the exact timeframe, but there was an instance where Sergeant Langen did smell what he thought was alcohol, asked Captain Sinaway if he was drinking. Assistant Myers was the ranking officer on the scene and did advise Captain Sinaway in front of me to get himself in the vehicle back to the station.
If, if that thing, if it occurred, it's prior to the zero tolerance policy?
It was not prior to the zero tolerance policy, you just admitted under oath that the zero tolerance policy's been in effect for two to three years.
So, I believe, you've fairly certainly, that's, uh, two years, maybe, no?
We've said two to three years. Either case, zero tolerance is still, you're driving a vehicle while under the influence of some...
I know that, we've tried, we've talked, I, once, it was, uh...
And why did Sergeant Langen ask you about that and invited immediately Assistant Chief Myers, send you back to the station?
It was, if, if it was, uh, 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 called, it would have been, uh, Myers, uh...
And you, were you ever counsel about that? You never spoken to about that, the assistant chief member had any kind of words with you, fire chief member said anything to you about that?
Prior to the zero tolerance policy, I had been asked about everything, uh, the, 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 I know that...
I'm not referring to zero tolerance policy, I'm actually talking about driving a department vehicle while under the influence? Which was the accusation that Sergeant Langen from the police department had actually inquired?
Was there any, uh...
Assistant Chief said, uh, I believe it was, I'm going to send him back to the station. Sergeant Langen left it at that, you went back to the station, we concluded the call.
I didn't, uh, uh...
I have no further questions.
Captain, you don't recall that incident, uh, all right, Captain, you have determination abilities to terminate a firefighter with the department, or, and, and, that's at the, uh, cluster, if for you, the fire chief, correct? All right, and as far as Lieutenant Allison, the incident that you testified to under oath, he smelled alcohol on his person, uh, didn't say he was, uh, under the influence, but I'm here to use... And you reported that to, uh, the higher, higher officers in the department, correct? Thank you, good luck. Assistant Chief Myers?
Do you sound, please swear of your testimony about this cause is the two, the two, the, uh, truth?
I did.
Sir, could you state your name for record?
Herbert Paul Meyer.
Governor Paul Meyer, M Y R D R.
And you are Assistant Fire Chief for the Sauk Village Fire Department, correct?
I'm Assistant Fire Chief on the, on the Fire Department.
All right, and how long have you been the Assistant Chief?
I'm fully, uh, the, uh, not exactly, we talked about ten, we were two officers.
Right, in the Assistant Chief, did you hold any rank with the Fire Department?
Yes, I have, I have a rank of Firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, captain, now, well, a, a chief of, uh, Assistant Chief, also a, 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 uh, arson, uh, fire, uh, investigator, uh, maybe twenty-seven, Fire.
Do you work for, uh, any other fire departments or fire protection districts?
I'm a, uh-
Okay, and you're also trusted with the village, obviously, correct? So, uh, tonight, you're hearing your capacity as Assistant Fire Chief.
I'm a, uh, Fire Department member, and have, uh, run, and we plan to both have, uh, and so maintain it to this on Fire Department.
Yes. Um, you're familiar with Lieutenant Ellison, correct?
Yes.
You're familiar with Lieutenant Ellison?
Yes.
All right, are you made aware, uh- I'll show you, uh, what's, exhibit three. Uh, it's a warning to Sauk Village Department of Safety, fourth, twenty-fourteen. You have your signature in the lower right portion of the page.
Exactly.
And can you tell American Board of General, uh, the document, uh, and why it was drafted inside, please?
Those are blue file, uh, Captain Sineaway, uh, Captain Staley, uh, Lieutenant Ellison, Captain Raxton, and the ladies, uh, about the Fire Department. So, took this in my, uh, due to, uh, Chief and I discussed it, and decided that, uh, there's been, a lot of this, uh, going on between, uh, Fire Department and officer, so we decided we're going to make it, uh, right here, I'll stop. I put out a warning, those, I put it in box with other officer, and I made a, uh, meeting in front of the training that night, that the B S is going to stop, we're going to work together, there's a good possibility that you can find yourself, uh, married to a partner. I will not take, one on fire, uh, and to love each other, fighting, arguing back and forth, still going for their good job, right to the job, uh, it was a sound, a good, uh, for you. And with that, I had a dirty question, and I seen four of all the officers that were on their call, this is step one, cases, uh, in the call.
Do our attention to the following tab, four. First page is entitled, I don't know if that's-
You, 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 uh, the, uh-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Tab four, uh, tab four.
Maybe, uh, uh, maybe, or, uh, uh, the event happened on July 4th.
All right, you sent your signature at the bottom right portion of the page.
Uh, sir, you're correct.
All right, and you made aware, uh, there's a fire call which was on fourth, twenty-fourteen, at approximately nine P M, uh, where there's a C O on, uh, twenty-two-two-one-six-three, five hundred, uh, you have to get, uh, Lieutenant Ellison responded to that call.
I was contacted approximately nine P M, so, on, uh, July 4th, uh, five nine, I was saying, I was my family, uh, basically, uh, along, along the road, and I received a phone call from, uh, engineer Bell. And he said, uh-
Sergeant, just speak up a little bit, she's taking that one. It was engineer, called for engineer Bell.
All right. It asked me to respond over, uh, the, Lieutenant Ellison's on scene, uh, and I just looked at him, he just must be there, a little quicker. I went in, grabbed a key, held up, turned back to my son, and then I turned on the fire, rolled down, and I turned on my fire, there was, uh, the dark color, and I, uh, 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 that training was very close to my car, as I turned in, it was very, uh, tall, and came, uh, I would say, uh, through it, a couple of minutes, I'm actually, uh, uh-
What direction, uh, were you traveling in?
I was, I was going, uh, that's the morning, west on, uh, six hundred first, turning, uh, the south on five, just about running north on five, and turning, and then, uh, east on, getting my first, so I was saying, turning, uh, back, back, uh, uh. All right, I took it down to the unit, at the end, uh, the back of, uh, Fire Department, and, uh, and their car, and they both, uh, mistaken to me that, that, uh, I was trying to, uh, if you read a little more information, and you can read, uh, read it out. I, uh, uh, but, uh, Fire Department, uh, finally, uh, supplied, and this time, but, uh, walked up to my squad, told me, Lieutenant Ellison, so, uh, developed my engine, uh, he started yelling at me, I went back to the engine, my car was trying to, uh, get up, Lieutenant Ellison slapped his hand, and told him that he was waiting, getting away, and I, uh, followed back to the tree, and getting back, uh, there, uh, people. Also, that night, when I was in the morning, uh, Mr. Allen called Fire Department Johnson and dinner, uh, and this one must have been followed here, and not, however, uh, Lord knows, he was not, he was not, uh, and he, uh, uh, statements that was turned in, to me, 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 and work at the fire. And I asked, uh, the bureau, uh, what, uh, what more did he do? Uh, they said that, uh, uh, Snorens, uh, went up to the state court, and I heard, uh, the, uh, around, uh, he, uh, 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 back to the station, uh, we're going to need one of them to give me the full confirmation while, uh, that, uh, and I believe he only had a statement to say.
It's the following pages, the top page is that, uh, the statement was signed by Fire Fighter, Charlie Johnson. Do you recognize that, is your signature on the statement? Can you please state a statement in your mailbox?
I, uh, 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 the, uh, all papers I received from them, that I, uh, all in my mailbox, I pulled my mailbox, uh, with all of my, uh, sheets, uh, and that is, uh, probably, uh, uh.
Next page, uh, posted date of July 4th, twenty-fourteen.
That, uh, period of being, uh, engineer, uh, uh.
Uh, Karen Bell was there on the call?
Yes, sir.
You requested him to do a sober report? And a sober report appeared in your mailbox?
Yes, sir.
And next page is, also dated, the statement dated is here from Fire Fighter, uh, uh.
This is from, uh, Fire Department, uh, uh, this is, uh, uh.
Okay, and that's in your mailbox.
Yes, sir.
That's, uh, statement, again dated July 4th of twenty-fourteen, was that prepared and signed by Fire Fighter, Butterfield?
Yes, it was, I did, uh, uh, uh.
All right, these are all four of the firefighters that were on the call, time Lieutenant Ellison showed up, July 4th of twenty-fourteen, and you prepared summaries based on, uh, your request to prepare the summaries, correct?
These are all, uh, summaries that I received from Fire Department, uh, on the call, at the, uh, 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 uh.
Did you in any way assist them in drafting or typing out those statements?
No, I do know that they separated the different rules, uh, so, uh, the greater, uh, so, uh, I'll get back to the, the back, and then, uh, uh, get in, and, uh-
Can you go to exhibit five, please? Corrected in that?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is the Sauk Village Fire Department disciplinary action form, correct?
Yes, sir.
The standard form which is generated by the Fire Department, uh, probably shows up on your computer, and then you fill out a blank type of typing?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, did you prepare this out?
Yes, I did, I did, uh, I, uh, I did pull in the mic, uh-
All right, and your signature at the bottom.
Yes, sir.
And it's signed, next to the officer, recommended the discipline, and it notates that you're the Assistant Chief, correct?
Uh, sir, you're on.
In the upper left portion, type of discipline, uh, boxed off, your recommendation is termination.
Termination of, uh, hostile, uh, vibration, uh, central, uh, 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 highly, uh, uh, hostile, building, uh, 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 alcohol.
Okay, that's further down, but under the type of discipline, termination, correct? All right, and you stand by, uh, your request, yes, the type of discipline to be imposed based upon investigation of this incident and other incidents, uh, to Lieutenant Ellison's termination from the Fire Department?
At this time, we cannot allow any firefighters, anytime, providing, uh, our team, in a toxic manner, I just don't believe, uh, uh, they don't get hurt, uh, 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 uh.
In nature of the events, uh, to the right, boxed off or checked up, I should say, violation of Department S O G's, uh, standard operating guidelines?
Yes, sir.
And also, next off, is another responding to seeing an personal vehicle while intoxicated. Is that based upon July 4th of twenty-fourteen incident?
At present time, it, uh, only Chief might, uh, respond, uh, representing, uh, the, uh, vehicle, with the other squad, creating of additional manpower, as part of the party, you do not respond to, uh, to your personal car, also, we set the policy of our current, represented, uh, 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 uh.
Was that policy in effect prior to July 4th of twenty-fourteen?
The department policy and village policy have been effective for a long, uh, and church policy has been effective on ours. Year and a half, I believe, uh, something like that, uh, uh.
So well prior to July 4th of twenty-fourteen?
Yes, sir.
All right, and the zero tolerance policy, it's had, in fact, well, uh, July 4th of twenty-fourteen?
I worked for a time in the, uh, eighty-sixth and, uh, second, uh, in the, uh, that time, uh, uh.
Uh, moving down, list of offenses, be specific, those policy procedures, uh, you listed out, uh, it was like three different incidents. Can you briefly take us through those incidents and explain them to the American Board?
All right, three minutes, uh, assigned to, uh, uh, over, uh, direct, uh, self, uh, uh, recon, as one of them. I received a call that night, uh, from, uh, the, uh, Village, uh, Disciplining Center, that said, uh, sixty-one, uh, being on scene, uh, three ninety-four, and, uh, between, uh, 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 I responded, and I walked up there, and Jim had just been in a small accident, and the other guy was willing to, uh, let her go, like, uh, Jim home, and even, uh, we would have his car, uh, 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 back there, and I did take, uh, the, uh, home.
Was he intoxicated on that night?
I, um, there was, uh, there was semi-autobrake, and, uh, the, I was my personal, uh, 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 I'm not, uh, 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 but my personal, uh, uh, because, uh, Jim had, uh, one, uh, uh.
All right, uh, right below that, uh, says that A C, Assistant Chief Myers, at the North, uh, two different bars in town, Lieutenant Ellison was struck, disorderly, in the bar.
There was a white, and, uh, past year and a half, year, probably year and a half, uh, one, I received a big phone call from the owners of the White, I asked him if I could come down and help me to one of the, uh, my fire partners, because he really did not, and he started to show the, uh, and, uh, cut down there, the owner was there, I asked, uh, why didn't you guys go on, uh, 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 and he was on the, uh, freaking up, and, uh, 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 the, uh, bartender, he's, well, not following that, I closed it down, uh, and, uh, called him, I first of all, so, uh, the other time was, at, uh, at, uh, Tom's Tavern, Tom's Tavern, this was all down, I received a call from the bartender, got him down, and see if I could get home, so, I don't think he's hurt, but he, uh, 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 law school, and I went down there, he wasn't hurt, I was able to, uh, 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 uh. What would you do if you had him? I have, uh, many, uh, times, uh, 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 and, uh, I'm all right, I'm all right. I will, uh, 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 uh.
Karen Bell, along with the interpret discipline, you, uh, you recommend termination, uh, which you have, uh, no permission, you, uh, recommend that Lieutenant Ellison, Lieutenant Ellison be admitted to thirty-day E F program at St. Martin Mercy Hospital, with a ninety days probation, if Lieutenant Ellison refuses to recommend it, he may be terminated immediately, uh, was to that, uh, true as of July 5th of twenty-fourteen?
True.
All right, and, uh, and at the bottom, that's, uh, it looks like copies were given to the employees with the county of this, uh, disciplinary action form given to Lieutenant Ellison?
I did, uh, 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 and, uh, other than seeing Jim and Amy in the chief's office, uh, he has, uh, 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 knows the most, uh, 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 and I waited to copy, uh, this, the rep, written one, written one, went to the file, and, waited to copy this, the written one, printed one, went to the file and that file was a feature, and he's going to separate it to, for sending one in the file.
The next day of July sixth? The letter, Village Letterhead, fire department letterhead, addressed to Lieutenant Allison via July seventh, twenty fourteen, is that time off by you?
I have one, and after, discussed with the chief, we desired that, and we, Maryland, or what areas, I said I'm watering on it, for the time, we just are making, so, I don't know.
Does he ask you, as far as the July fourth, twenty fourteen incident, when you went to the scene, there was a national holiday, had you been consuming any alcohol prior to going out to the scene based upon Engineer Bell's call?
Repeat your question.
The call that Lieutenant Allison went to, July fourth, your family, how many hit your house prior to getting the call, correct?
That, that day, yes, I was.
All right, and you been consuming any alcohol at your house on July fourth?
That day, my entire family came over to my house. I couldn't feel good, my son, someone over, said I was drinking, and I was going to have a beer, and I said no, and I was at, I don't know, a lot of coffee, and a lot of coffee in that room, and the rest of the day, I was very, I didn't feel good. And that was some more than nine hours.
It was eight or nine hours later, correct?
No, it was.
Right. And when a call comes out, as the chief and assistant chief, you hear the tones of a, of a call?
Yes.
So were you aware that there was a CO call?
Yes.
That call is approximately three, so it's about three hours.
Is that your power?
No, I know, but how far is that call from your house?
About four miles.
Okay. That's all you have.
Mr. Myers? Uh, going back to tab number three. Warning number two. Or is that the second, you're claiming that's the second warning you gave me regarding the sentencing? Tab three, June three, are you on right there?
Morning, uh, morning, uh, uh.
Okay. You did tell us when you brought myself and Captain Staley into Bureau at the fire station, once it was discussed, this was a done issue, correct?
I'm not going to say that.
What you had written, what you, showing you wrote here, that myself and Captain Staley have been belittling and slandering Captain Sinewick in front of fire department members?
He does it, I have that in the duty, and he's on number two, so, say that for my trial, the topic.
Did you not interview us at length?
I don't know what that was all, I think.
Forty-five minutes, an hour?
No, no, it was about half an hour.
Half an hour, okay. And when we were done with that conversation, did you not tell us both that this is where this was going to lie? This was a dead issue? Meaning that the situation had been taken care of, nothing further should have come of?
I'm aware that, I think that's, that's it, I'll take it to the chief, and we'll set it, and if I start it, when it come out, and go to, to one another, over, I, I'll tell you.
So this is a warning letter to the entire department, just not myself and Captain Staley?
From that day, and if you don't, I can first time do that. I sat in the meeting room, and our department, their meeting room, and I agreed, and I started on the table.
Mr. Myers, I'm more referring back to the incident in the Bureau, where you had us behind closed doors. I don't, do you understand that?
Well, you asked.
I'm asking about the conversation that you held with myself and Captain Staley behind closed doors in the Bureau, prior to meeting with the entire department?
As long as you, uh, I take that back, I take it with, at the, um, concept, or that, that, um, getting into the concept, drawing the mark, that, that meeting, no, no.
That is the meeting I'm referring to.
And as, well, both of you, or both of them, all, worse than, are very constant, acting like kids, and remember, I said, okay, it's time to stop.
Wasn't it also your statement during that conversation, that you weren't able to substantiate the complaint from Captain Sinewick, and you laid blame to all the officers?
That's correct. And, uh, further investigation, it's on your work, your work now, and I need you out of the thing.
Okay.
And that was, you exited, you answered it.
Next question. When was this placed into my personnel file?
I don't know, I think, I don't, I just had to do the confusion, should have been a memory.
Mr. Myers, are you aware that I stopped into the fire station, spoke with Fire Chief Stockfrigg, and actually made physical copies of all disciplinary complaints in my personnel jacket? I do not have a copy of this.
I'm staying, that's why I'm coming out.
Okay. Uh, let's go back to, we'll tab number four. You stated under oath that you do not, you could not identify the driver, you know it was a dark colored S U V?
Not what I did.
Okay.
I said there's a period to identify, a period to be not surprised, or.
You could, you cannot positively identify this by my vehicle?
Yeah, my, my.
Okay. Uh, back to the disciplinary action form.
I believe it's data five.
Six. State one year ago, so this is five July, they put it, July twenty thirteen. Are you aware that my accident occurred in twenty eleven or twenty twelve? State it one year ago.
So are you aware that me and the D U I, it was not clear?
No, sir, my question to you is, did I get a D U I from the Illinois State Police?
I don't.
You took me home, correct?
I took you home, yeah.
If I was arrested for a D U I, I would have not gone home if you had been in the jail with the Illinois State Police.
I said it was not clear, I have to go home.
But I did not receive a D U I, as far as you remember?
I don't, I don't.
As far as you remember that?
As I, as I.
As far as I, as you remember, Mr. Myers, did you, here at the Illinois State Police, place me under arrest for D U I?
I did, I did, at first, well, as you use, you, I think that, it's, I didn't read the law, I did not.
Chief Myers, you said that you were notified, two different bars in town, that I was drunk and disorderly. Were the police called at that point? Or was anything placed in my jacket, because you're using this disciplinary form?
Her father, both, who's a fire, uh, or.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm going off to tab number six, middle page, A C Myers has been notified by two different bars in town, that Allison was drunk and disorderly in the bar, A C Myers took Allison home.
That's right.
Okay. Were the police ever notified about this? If I was such unruly?
I don't, I don't.
It may be five, man.
Five.
Tab five, tab, I believe it's tab five.
Yeah, one, or six.
Was there anything placed in my personnel jacket, regarding these two incidents?
I don't know.
At this time, when these, I believe it was your, I couldn't hear very well, but I believe it was your testimony, that if you would have known better, you would have offered me help, did you have reason to believe, when these two events occurred supposedly, that I needed help then?
If you're asking my personal opinion, I would be my personal opinion.
He's asking questions.
You have my personal opinion?
I'm, I'm asking, you based on an assistant chief and an arson investigator with all your certification, did you think there was a problem prior to?
I thought it was happening, the, the, the situation.
Have you ever been called by any other member of the department, to come get them after a vehicle accident, rear end collision?
Yes.
Where alcohol may or may not have been involved?
Yes, okay.
Can you tell us about that, please?
Uh, I was, as long as I'm out of the road, the case, uh, say, uh, yeah, it's a, it's a fire.
Okay.
I was helping him up, back home, and, um, it's hard, it's, it's hard for the.
You, you, you transported Mr. Staley to his residence?
No, I didn't.
You don't did?
I, the police officer, uh, I had a whole lot of things, uh, brought back, and I didn't transfer.
Are you able, are you able to tell me what happened to Captain Staley as a result of that accident? Did Captain Staley suffer any disciplinary actions against him? Or possibly being intoxicated in a rear end collision? How often mean?
Well, due to track, the police officer said that he was attacked, and I would not know if he had that, if he wanted, I would not call him.
I'm asking, as you as the assistant chief of the fire department, if the department issued any discipline to Captain Staley?
I would not know if it was officer, uh, any, or, 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 if you want.
You could ask the same question for me on three ninety-four. If I was intoxicated, don't you think two Illinois State troopers would have arrested me for D U I?
I don't know.
You just made the statement that it was the officer's discretion, that if he thought he was intoxicated, impairment?
I don't know.
Well, you're listing, you're listing my offense at three ninety-four, this disciplinary. Okay. When did this, when did you place this into my file? When did you place the disciplinary action form into my file?
Uh, with, I'm sure, definitely, uh, believe after, uh, the, uh, morning, and our fire department, uh.
I do not have a copy of this form either. It's not my personnel file, as of the last time I looked at my personnel file. Do you have my personal cell phone, for this question?
Do I have?
Yes.
I have, I have, your drive, if I live in my home.
Okay. Are you aware also that every time that the fire chief of this fire department has called me to come down for some kind of a communication or conversation, I've responded? You stated that you attempted several times to get notice of this to me. This is the first time I'm reading of any kind of follow-up action. As a matter of fact, every time I've asked about anything?
I've, 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 I've.
You asked me to come down and speak with you?
No, I'm not coming over.
Okay.
I'm not supposed to say, or, yeah.
But your, it was your testimony to the board, that you attempted several times to get this piece of paper to me?
Well, your, 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 my, my.
But yet, every time the fire chief Stockfrigg has called me, to come down for any kind of a conversation or serve me with notice, I have responded, immediately. Is this still your recommendation that if the board should choose to, uh, thirty day rehab program? Is that basically your recommendation, or your recommendation is termination at this point?
I know, I hope the miracle, I hope our secret, I hope Captain Staley will be able to say, I'm telling you. You go to the fire catch center? I have no problem.
Okay. Are you aware of the incident that I asked Captain Sinewick about regarding Sergeant Langen and Captain Sinewick driving a department vehicle? Was the order similar to that of alcohol?
That, I was on call, and, uh, the sergeant's on, doesn't he, he said, what did you try to remember? And I said, I'll say, nobody can remember that.
Yes, sir.
He said, well, I have a paint holder alcohol. And when he came back, I don't know, it was you, it was, uh, yes, and a couple of fire cars down, and he was saying, but he said, you, somehow you need to, oh. I had my, it was everybody home.
Are you able to tell him, was there any disciplinary action against Captain Sinewick for that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we saw, right?
What did you do, Chief? Did you, did you take any action against Captain Sinewick as a chief staff officer at the Stock Village Fire Department?
I made mistakes, I don't know that's wrong.
Chief Myers, or Mr. Myers, have you ever made in any context a comment to handle the personnel and fire department, that you wish to clear the way for your son to get promoted? And the only way to do that was for me to be terminated?
Justice, justice.
I've got no further questions.
All right, I'll tell you what, we're gonna do is, we will recess for no more than five minutes. So I need a motion to recess.
No.
And a motion and second. Village Court, please call.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Okay, we're in recess, but, uh, just so we know, no one on this board should discuss what's happening in here, uh, during this time, so.
Real quick.
It's gonna be, we're in there.
At this point, I'd like to submit all exhibits and evidence, and then rest on behalf of the.
Wait.
You want to recall that?
Let's recall it, then, with him.
Okay. You want to recall that?
Okay. Be a motion, um, please.
So.
Village Court, please call.
Burgess.
Which one?
Reserve. Oh. Burgess, okay, Ford.
Yes.
Oscar.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
William Pence.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I guess that the, uh, the, they have to be admitted to evidence?
All right. With that, I would ask for a motion to recess into executive session?
Actually, I want to be able to tell Lieutenant Allison if he has anything to.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So if you guys need to take a break?
I must take a break.
Well, we. That's fine, go ahead, we can ask, do you have anything else you'd like to submit?
Yes, I'd like to call a couple of people.
Okay.
But we gotta have a couple of people to recess.
Okay, so I'll tell you, again, let's go back to the recess, because we have some that need to, uh, take a break for a minute.
So we have to sit?
Yes.
I make a motion, that we have recess for five minutes?
Okay. We have a motion and second, just so, we'll reaffirm this again, there should be no discussion among the board about what's happening during this time of recess, we can take care of business, and I'm asking everyone to come straight back. All right, so you have a motion, we have a second, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're recess, no more than five minutes.
Ask for motion, please, Ms. Jones?
Second.
First.
President.
Ford. Oscar. Washington. Yes, please.
Yes.
All right, we ended the, uh, village has rested, and now we're gonna go to Lieutenant Allison.
I'm not, I'm assistant. Call Captain Ross Staley.
Do you swear for your next one, you're asking this, uh, with the two, I go to, connect with two?
Captain Staley, free.
Uh, first of all, could you please state your name and spell your last name for the person?
Russell Staley, R U S S T A L, Staley, S T A L, E.
Okay, there you go.
Captain Staley, I have a question for July, uh, twenty fourteen. Were you the first one notified?
I was notified, uh, Saturday morning, Saturday morning.
What were you told by the member reporting the incident to you?
That, um, they had a call, had evening, on July fourth, which I was not, on a call. And, uh, the, the incident, I'll, you know, it showed on scene, and, um, yes, we're, uh, car, uh, car, uh.
At that time, were you told by the reporting member, that I dropped the number, that's what he stated to me? Okay. And you, following your actions along the line, as far as the captain would go, report this to your superiors?
Well, first thing I asked, I asked, did this really happen? He stated to me, yes, it did. I said, do you want to pursue this issue? He says, no, not at this time. I said, if you change your mind, let me know. In the meantime, I had a phone call to the fire chief, informed him that the events happened in ninety-four, that it was a words exchange, and trying to find out what's going on, and his statements, who involved in the situation, and I love that, that, that time.
I'm gonna jump forward a couple of months to probably August or September, were you present with myself, when Engineer Bell and firefighter Ricardo met up with us in establishment out of this town? Can you briefly tell the board, your recollection of that conversation?
Ricardo Johnson approached me, he called me, actually, he asked what I was doing, and I was just on the screen here, and he says, what I'm talking about, I don't have a pocket, and he said, I just wanted to let you know, that, um, it was supposedly what Mr. Allison had said, I have never have. He said, the reason he did that, he was upset, the policy that's going on in the department, he was just hoping that somebody, I was trying to, with words, what kind of work that came out of him as well, and Eric Bell was anxious to be too much.
Thank you. Were you present in the fire station, uh, prior to, for July twenty fourteen, when engine, engineer Aaron Anderson brought a weapon into the firehouse? Can you describe the conditions surrounding that?
Uh, he had a handgun in sale, equipped by the caliber of automatic, I'm not sure if they might have been a hole, he had it in sale, he brought it into the station to show, I believe, you were, the person, correct? He brought it in, and he answered the breaker, and the radio.
So the best of your knowledge, Captain Staley, was any disciplinary action taken against Engineer Anderson for that action?
No.
After you received information during this conversation that you gained with firefighter Johnson and firefighter Bell, did you inform the chiefs? And what was their remark?
What I told the chiefs was that firefighter Johnson had a cannabis story, and it basically in that conversation, too, he was told what to write in the state, and they did information to escape, or willing to admit, acknowledge it, they just kind of go for that, they go for that, excuse myself from the office that I posted for, whatever, I don't know.
Captain Staley, you've known me since roughly nineteen ninety-two. We both started our career kind of at the same time with the village fire department. During that time, did you ever know me to be in any kind of trouble with the police, the fire department, or any other job, secondary employment as well, regarding any kind of alcohol type offenses?
I don't know.
Have I, it, best of your knowledge? Have I, in best of your knowledge, have I ever been arrested and or convicted of driving while under the influence?
Not at all.
To the best of your knowledge, Captain Staley, have I ever been, had to be escorted out of any establishment in any time?
Not at all.
Can you recall the conversation that you and the assistant chief had in the bureau prior to, before July twenty fourteen?
I recall that conversation.
Can you give the board here summation of what was discussed that day?
We were, I don't know if we were being accused, or we were being... What it come down to is, the accusations were put out, I know the members of the department that were saying, it's madness, things, or something like that. That's how I recall saying, and it was not a lot, but in his words, the chief, kind of, a little bit, when he said, "Not to be asked off." And you have.
Was it, uh, your understanding, Captain Staley, that at the end of that conversation, that it was a done issue? That it was not to be resurfaced, there was no paperwork going in anybody's jackets?
I didn't notice any paperwork of that.
Okay, you just answered my next question. Is there any write-up from that conversation in your personnel that you know? I have no further questions.
Captain Staley, you started with the department around the same time as Lieutenant Allison?
Uh, that whole, I can't remember what.
You started with the department around the same time as Lieutenant Allison?
Correct.
Is it full size?
Full time? Yes, full size.
You, uh, started with the fire department around the same time?
Yes, at nineteen ninety.
With Lieutenant Allison?
Well, yes, around there.
Okay, and since that time, you've become somewhat friends, first date?
Yes.
Go out socially?
Yes.
All right, you go out to restaurants, or, uh, places, uh, off workout, first date? Uh, how many times a week, you say you go out with Lieutenant Allison?
Every once every couple, month, half a week, every month, every three weeks.
Okay, you guys attach to each other during the week?
On that.
You call each other?
On that.
See what's going on, all right? Uh, you've been disciplined together, correct?
I have been disciplined, uh, a little.
What, being called?
We were council.
Council, so you called into, uh, either the chief or assistant chief's office, sat down and talked about an incident? We consider that to be some sort of discipline, verbal discipline? Okay, so you guys have disciplined together, at least on one occasion, correct? And then about comments made allegedly by you and your friend Lieutenant Allison against a fellow firefighter, correct? All right, and you're denying that that happened, correct? Or did you make any statements against that fellow firefighter?
None that I, but, but I agree with my, uh, my.
Did that mean because you were intoxicated when you made those statements, you had a cough out in? Is that possible? Oh, okay, so did they, did they give you a date or a location?
No.
About when any of these statements, harassing comments?
No.
You're hearing me pretty good now. Uh, and when those statements would have been made through the fellow firefighter that I camped with? So they just called you in and said, "You know what, stop making statements to Captain, that was it." And then as far as firefighter Johnson, he's no longer with the department, correct? Firefighter Johnson's no longer with the department?
No.
All right, uh, were you good friends with him?
Yes.
All right, you guys would hang out together, correct? Uh, if you pulled you something, uh, would you believe him?
Yes.
Okay, if he made a statement to you, you'd have no reason to question him, correct? Because he was a friend of hers?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me?
If he said something, I, I would take, I would consider, I would, I wouldn't take it face value, or something, like.
But, but did you know him to be a liar during the time that you hung out with him?
No.
All right, so, uh, in general terms, he was a truthful person, correct?
Yes.
And you recall, uh, shortly after, or on July fifth of twenty fourteen, I believe you testified? Uh, you learned that he had words, uh, Lieutenant Allison had words with firefighter Johnson, correct? That's what I was told. And what you were told is by firefighter Johnson, your friend, that's right, correct? And your friend at that time, who you said was a truthful person, you had no reason to question what he would tell, what he would tell you. He said that Lieutenant Allison called him the N-word, correct? And that was within twenty-four, forty-eight hours of that incident, correct? All right, and then you asked him, "Did it really happen?" And at that same conversation, he said, "Yeah, it really happened," correct?
Yes.
Uh, and then you asked him about it, and he told you, you know what, he didn't want it to proceed with any charges or make a big issue of being called, correct?
Correct.
All right, so that wasn't brought to, uh, any hearing or based on that statement? Uh, he didn't file charges, uh, against Lieutenant Allison, or he didn't run to the state superintendent's office or anything? He didn't, he decided to go.
No.
Would you consider Lieutenant Allison and firefighter Johnson to be friends, or other than? And then, you're hanging out at some establishment, or you met up at some bar outside of the village, uh, in August, uh, twenty fourteen, uh, with engineer Bell and Johnson and yourself, correct? And what's the name of that place? Pickups? And this is the place that Lieutenant Allison was in, Fourth of July, it's right in Lindwood, correct?
Yes.
And were you consuming alcohol, uh, with Bell, Johnson, uh, on this August day at Pickups?
We split with our colleagues.
Okay. Question simple, were you consuming alcohol?
Right.
All right, I'm not gonna ask if you're intoxicated, you're, you guys were there as friends, drinking, have, a few buddies have some beers together, right?
Right.
Okay, and at the time, you're aware where you're not, that Lieutenant, Lieutenant Allison had charges brought against him, or at least he was placed on suspension by the department? You're aware the department was looking into his actions on, uh, that occurred on July fourth, correct? And his friend, firefighter Johnson and engineer Bell, they were aware of it also? I mean, it's no secret, uh, and you guys were in the bar, had a few beers, talking about it, correct? And were you aware also that, uh, he, and I say he, Lieutenant Allison, had been formally interrogated by myself and the chief? Right, so you knew that before, when you went to the bar, I asked a bunch of questions under oath, and that, you know, he was really looking at termination, that he was gonna be separated from the fire department, correct? You knew that, correct? Firefighter Johnson, his friend, knew that? He and engineer Bell knew that? And then, at that time, with all that knowledge, without Johnson, just saying, "You know what, he never made that statement." That's your testimony? Thank you.
Reiterate. Captain Staley, to the best of your knowledge, was there any coercion on my report towards firefighter Johnson to recant his statement or engineer Bell?
No, I, or.
Did I have any conversation, as far as you know, with either one of them after the point of ten July twenty fourteen, my formal interrogation?
Did I, or?
Okay, no further. Just a very excuse. I'd like to call the fire chief of the fire department, Alan Stoffregen.
Yes. Do you have some testimony about this, uh, two, oh two, and then the two?
Excuse me a minute, Chief.
Please state your name, uh, please state your name and spelling for.
Alan Stoffregen, A-L-A-N-S-T-O-W-F-R-E-G-E-N.
All right, Chief Stoffregen, I've been on your employ since nineteen ninety-two. Or I've worked with you since nineteen ninety-two, I believe you were a captain, maybe a W D chief at that point, just for the record.
No, I'm not.
My question to you is, first of all, a couple of, uh, I'd like to know, you remember the day that I came in and examined my personnel file?
The date, I don't know, but I know you did connect, that's why I opened up the file.
Did I review everything with you, as per policy, I believe law? I took copies of everything that I needed to prepare for this out of my personnel file?
Correct.
Okay. Not sure if you had this in front of you or not. Exhibit number three, is that one from your team?
I don't know if it's related to me, because I've seen it, but that.
Okay.
Was it in your file? I have no idea, because I don't have you to.
Fire chief, when was the first time you saw that document?
I don't know.
So you're telling this board that the first time you saw this document, exhibit number three, was two hours ago, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason I'm saying that, my attorney filed, uh, the corporate records.
Okay.
I don't know what was in there.
You as the chief of the department?
No, the chief of the department does not know what was in your file, unless I put it in the person.
Correct, but you're assistant chief of this, so you as the chief of the department should know what's going in your members' files, your personnel files, correct?
To a certain extent, because the general bro is, is in charge of personnel.
So as the chief of the department, head of the department, you have not seen this document in this whole time?
Correct.
Exhibit number four. What was that statement?
I've read it this week.
Okay. Can you tell me with any certainty whether that particular letter is in my personal file?
I think I can say it, too, your board will come down, make a book, which I don't keep record of, so.
When was the first time you saw that document, chief?
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't do it, sorry.
So you're unsure when the first time you saw that was?
No.
Did you see this item shortly after four July twenty fourteen, that was supposedly written? If you don't remember, if you doesn't remember exhibit number four, it would have been exhibit number five. Now, my understanding is, lieutenant, within the fire department, these disciplinary action forms have to cross the fire chief's desk. These are final on assignment. Do you see your signature anywhere in that piece of paper?
No, sir.
Are you aware that assistant chief was trying to serve me with that?
He isn't that position to take, uh.
Were you aware that he was trying to serve me with that document?
Can you talk about these?
The disciplinary action form?
Oh, okay, sorry.
It isn't correct, is it?
I don't have justice. Listen, it is testimony that he tried to be held.
Okay, chief, every time you've called me to come down and receive paperwork or information, have I not been jolly on the spot, excuse my language, have I not been punctual in a very timely manner to get to your office at your fire station to receive whatever information you may have for me? Okay. Did the assistant chief ask you, on behalf of him, to notify me that this form was waiting there for me? Did the assistant chief ask you to advise me or inform me that I was being offered, and I have to read it excuse me, being offered a thirty-day rehab program at the hospital, being placed on ninety days probation, were you aware of that?
I'm not aware of, uh, you know, that, that was trying to get all the lawyers to sue me, and I, this, uh.
Okay. Chief, are you aware, or do you recall, myself, engineer Anderson, and yourself in your office, when engineer Anderson purchased a new firearm? I believe it was a Ruger, I think, I wanna say it's a nine millimeter. Do you remember him bringing it into your office to show you what it was?
I ran on it.
He was still inside the building with the firearm, right?
I don't know if I could, I don't know if I had a firearm.
Did? Did engineer Anderson come under any disciplinary actions for that offense?
No, it would be, I mean, if it was lower than the question, it would be a problem.
But you said you weren't sure if it was lower than. Chief Stoffregen, you currently, in your office at the fire station right now, possess two boxes of ammunition that sit on a shelf to the left side of your computer monitor.
Correct.
Fire chief Stoffregen, do you have any weapons in your office? Do you have magazines in your office? What's the purpose for ammunition in your office, then?
I have that ammunition for a gun that I own, and that gun, so I have to be on the field to check on, right?
How long has that ammunition been there? Fire chief Stoffregen, are you aware of any comment from the assistant chief to yourself where he states that he doesn't remember seeing my vehicle at all that night on Fourth of July, coming towards him? Did the assistant chief make a comment to you that states somewhat, some in reference? Summation is, "I never even saw it that night."
No, uh, I would imagine he came on harder, dropped the tire, he hasn't been able to get a car back, so.
Chief Stoffregen, how many years have you been fire chief?
Seven.
And in your time as fire chief, have you ever had something like this come up where it wasn't handled within the department? Have you ever had anybody suspended, as long as I've been suspended continuously, without any kind of, uh, interview from you or one of your subordinates? Can you tell the board why it was never interviewed by any staff officer? Can you tell the board, I'll let you answer the question first.
I just want to state statute, it is formally interrogated, which is.
But prior to that interrogation, did any of your staff officers talk to you? Did you get a phone call from somebody saying, "Jim, what happened?" In the time I've known you, chief, have I ever been in trouble with alcohol? Have I ever been troubled with law enforcement? Have I ever been fired for a job because of alcohol, intoxication, otherwise, that you can recall?
I have.
When I was involved in my accident on three ninety-four?
Maybe I'll send you a transcript. That allows you to. How about? Once you leave that station, you're undrunk. I've got no control over your personal business. And the states that I hate, I'll prove on this. Something on the inside happens, and you have to pull it back into that station, and we will make, uh, judgment. Anything else?
Fire chief Stoffregen, past practice prior to the zero tolerance policy, or even during the zero tolerance policy, have you, have you not sent people in a village squad to go find out what's going on with a crew on the call because you yourself were with individuals at an establishment and or a bar within the limits of Suck Village?
Yeah, Jim, I have a question, you redefine it, if you would before, answer it.
Has he ever ordered anybody to get in a, a department vehicle to go check on a crew while they are out on the call? While he has been sitting in a bar himself?
We're talking about.
Yes, sir.
I haven't in a hard few years.
Okay, but have you done that in the past?
Judging relevance, you have to answer this, it's all prior to the, uh, your tolerance.
Okay, I have no further questions, please.
No, my love, thank you.
Wait, you can make a final statements? Senator, well, because, with the questions and the witnesses that I brought, since nineteen ninety-two, this is the first time I've been in any kind of significant trouble with the fire department. I've got no previous disciplinary actions outside of minor accidents. I've never been disciplined on the job or lost a job anywhere for any kind of alcohol problem. This all seems to stem from when I got promoted to lieutenant. I'm not sure, I'm not specifically asking why, but suddenly, what appears to be one day, where I made, I did make the mistake of stopping by, to check on a crew because it was a holiday, and I knew there was short manpower. All of a sudden, now I stand before you tonight. My heart and my focus has always been with the fire department. I will not, nor have I ever, put any other member of the department under the endangerment, either by my behavior or allowance of any kind of injurious behavior. I still wish to serve with the fire department, I've served with other fire departments, I grow up in this town, and, uh, you know, do I regret the mistake here? Absolutely. Do I think it warrants my termination? I don't believe so, I have that opinion.
Briefly, uh, your defense, again, you have to weigh in, in, in those areas, not, that, that, any counter, uh, any type of, uh, uh, fees, or. This man, that is, is grounds for termination, and a whole other thing, for a law. Uh, if you found that Lieutenant Allison lied, either through performance interrogation, right? That's grounds for termination, and, uh, he'll, he'll be upheld. If you believe that he responded to a call inappropriately, uh, and disregarded and followed standard operating guidelines that are handed out to all firefighters, that's grounds for termination. Uh, if you disagree with it or ask, if you find it, you know, it's.
If you disagree with it or not, if you find it, you know, disobeyed the standard operating guidelines, it's termination, it's cause. If you find that he responded with alcohol in his breath, looking at the intoxicated, violated the zero tolerance policy, it's grounds for termination, if you thought of your department. I think, I asked you to look at all the evidence that was added. We have all firefighters that came and testified against his superior. It has nothing to do with his position of lieutenant, I don't even know what that has to do at all with this hearing. What does have to do with this hearing, that he is a lieutenant, he should act like a lieutenant. Superior officer of the fire department, he hasn't acted that way for some time. But they have fellow firefighters coming here, he's circulated a petition, they're worried about the fire department, protects people, your residents of your village, and they have the guts to sign in, they're coming in here and testifying their own against their superior. And they don't think he's a good guy with the department, basically, not like he lied fourth incident, but previous incidents. Incidents like printing magazines inside the firehouse. Incidents coming to the firehouse after consuming alcohol three or four times. Incidents of harassment, making improper statements to fellow fighter, fellow fighter, firework lab. And with the testimony and what really happened with the N-word, I think that happened, he showed up to a fire call that he shouldn't have. He wasn't told not to do it, he could drink it all day, you know, it's Fourth of July, he not started at noon. He only had come for two or three hours at a place in Linwood. People be mad, and, you know, stayed there that long, then he went for one hour, to Wise Guys, and were missing three or four hours. He never testified, he go through the sworn statement from his former interrogation, then he went home, went to the bathroom, talked to his parents. Where are his parents? They should have came and said, he was there for three or four hours after Wise Guys, and he was fine. Because it didn't happen. What he did is, he did a lot more than he's willing to testify to you. And now he's trying to back and say, you know what, I went intoxicated, I am sorry, I regret what I did. But what he did is he exposed you and all your residents' liability, basically, his actions had paid in other days. If somebody shows up to a call, gets the firehouse intoxicated, bumped into, somebody have a raise, you know, the fire was sure to happen any day, but it's more likely to happen if somebody's intoxicated. And if they fuck with this, if they say something wrong, or if something is wrong, it's not in the village, it exposes your liability. It's why you brought in the law school, we have insurance, because you're, you're trying to cut down on the cost of your exposure. You just can't get individuals like this, if you're bored, just got it. For someone that they're allowed to do and what they have to do, you're supposed to be a leader of the department, they can break all the rules. And nobody, it's cooperating the rules, he comes in, says, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, that's too easy, I mean, that's, it's second rate stuff. And you punish your, your second rate, send him to the room, and they have a court again, you know, force of your punishment. That's not allowed for, you know, an officer of your fire department, he's been with the department for many, many years, gone through the ranks. He's supposed to be directing, you know, the younger or inexperienced, inexperienced firefighters. That'll tell me that he showed to the members that testified here, Assistant Chief Myers, and to Chief Stoffregen. And as far as the comments to firefighter Johnson, I don't think there's any doubt that he was intoxicated and showed up to call. He yelled at screen, at those firefighters, he shouldn't have been there, but he was there. He fell behind the fire truck, he stumbled around, and slapped the fellow fighters hand away. Made a statement, get the fuck out of your truck, get away from me. And firefighter Johnson, you know, American, he made that statement to him. Your testimony, he's a real good friend. So firefighter Johnson, I can't remember, hey, how am I going to take that word, that thing, or story, no, but... I don't think there's any doubt that he spoke, he spoke because he was intoxicated. And then, he's a good friend, firefighter Johnson changed his mind less later after he found out that he was placed at, placed at being interrogated, and he's run at the risk of being terminated in the department. Certainly, he made that statement, and come in here and say that he did, there's another lie. So if you find that any of his statements are untrue, and his conduct is proven enough, it's grounds for termination. If your fire department asks you to look at all the evidence, consider, who do you want on your fire department? Who do you want to help, what do you require of your fire department? If you want Lieutenant Allison, a person that doesn't acknowledge, give to the state that he hasn't drank in public, doesn't ask to go into a rehab facility, even though Assistant Chief Myers testified, you know, it's still on the table. He's still not mad enough to say, you know, you have a problem, it's caused me life hardships, I've hit rock bottom in the last twelve, eighteen months, I want to rehab, I want to work for your department. Not doing any of that. So if he wants a lieutenant, he has, he's not language, and he's aggressive with other firefighters, and he has harassed and harassed, eluded other firefighters, who has, I think, a serious breathing problem. He's of authority, and keep in mind, your department's up to you guys. You guys are the corporate authorities, you know, that's, that's the type of department you want. But, you know, months from now, years from now, if there's more issues, it's going to come back on this board. From the decision that you've made on who you want running, not only the fire department, the police department, all the others, it goes across the board. It triples its weight now. So I think with the charges, Gavin's name, and Admiral Fordy, I think it should follow the reputation of terminating, of the fire department. Thank you.
All right, at this point, I will ask now for a recess, you go into executive session.
So a motion to second.
Yeah, motion on second, Coach Kirk, please go ahead.
First is...
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Pasca.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
As for a motion, it can be...
So a motion second.
Motion second, please go ahead.
First is...
Here.
Warden.
Here.
Pasca.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
As for a motion for disciplinary action and termination of Lieutenant Gaines Allison due to responding to a fire call in his personal vehicle after consuming intoxicated while off duty, which is a violation of the subdivision fire department S.L.G.
So...
Second.
Motion second, please go ahead.
First is...
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Pasca.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.